This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and open up the June 5, 2023, regular council meeting, called the order at 7:00 PM. I urge for the pleasure of the legions.
My pleasure, legions, to the choir of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let everybody stir it up.
Okay, any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Have two?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a presentation.
Okay.
An appreciation of Chief Smith.
Okay, good.
And then we need to add to new business F, the proposal from AdCom Engineering.
Say that again.
AdCom Engineering.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or additions? Okay, with those two additions, would anyone like to make a motion? It's up to the agenda this evening.
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel Webb, would you call the roll please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hubert?
Aye.
Counsel Norman?
Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Counsel Ash?
Aye.
Counsel Rod?
Aye.
Moving right into our presentations, welcome Chief Smith. Amy?
Chief Smith? Call me sir. Oh, boy. So, on behalf of the Vernon Police Department, you know, being a public servant, I know that sacrifice is family, you don't get to spend a lot of time with them because you're always taking care of everything else, so I just wanted to, myself and Vernon Police Department, want to present you with this appreciation award. We'd like to recognize you for your dedication, loyalty, and hard work, with great respect and admiration for your service. We don't struggle with real pay, have you pictured this? Thank you. At least this time you didn't yell taser, taser, taser.
Thank you again, Dean, for all your dedication to our community.
Honestly, it's been my pleasure.
It's very short and warranted presentation, but for a long service of duty, so thank you once again. Okay, I do not have a mayor's report. Are there any council committee meeting reports tonight? Okay, Parks?
I didn't make it to Park, so I was sick, unfortunately, but I do have some questions that they forwarded to me that I'm working to resolve, and I tried to come in to Joseph with what we keep missing each other, so I'll get with you about those.
The big ones are, they, I think, are still struggling with budget questions, kind of
like the never-ending cycle.
Oh.
So they're hoping to get like a tutorial on how to read the documents that they asked for and are receiving. And then they were asking if I wanted to be a budget liaison, and I was like, I don't understand what that means because I'm your liaison and I'm on the budget committee, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's an extra spot, but okay.
I need to clarify that, they wanted to know if the brochures have been distributed yet.
Kim came and picked them up on Memorial Day.
Perfect, and then they want to know what's going on with the RFP.
Yeah, we're behind on that.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on, any topics from the floor tonight, Stephanie?
I have none.
None. Consent agenda for acceptance, Parks Committee meeting minutes for March 2023.
I move to accept the Parks Committee meeting minutes for March 2023, consent and chip acceptance.
Motion's been made to accept the consent agenda, is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, call the roll please, Stephanie.
Counsel Rod?
Aye.
Counsel Ash?
Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Counsel Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hubert?
Aye.
Questions carried.
Consent agenda for approval, City Council meeting minutes for May 15, 2023.
I move to accept the City Council meeting minutes for May 15, 2023, as written.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? And motion's been made by Counsel Webb, would you call the roll again, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hubert?
Aye.
Counsel Ash?
Aye.
Counsel Webb?
Aye.
Counsel Norman?
Aye.
Aye.
Questions carried.
Okay, is there any unfinished business tonight? If none, we'll move right into new business, Jamboree requests can be found on page six through 10. Thank you for the letter, Roger. Any questions from the council regarding this application? Business as usual? Yeah.
What did it do? Were we having the same arrangement with baseball players, is that part of this, or?
Yeah.
Okay, same, same arrangement as we've been doing.
Yep, we just, we were at a meeting at 6 o'clock at Spencer Park to kind of talk about logistics and solutions for issues that came up last year with driving around, but we think we found plenty of parking for them to park and walk in if they're day-bouncing players, and then they'll come in to camp and stay. For any vehicles they need to run to the store, go pick someone up, they need to keep outside of kind of the closed area of Spencer.
How'd last year go down at Spencer Park? Yeah.
Well, it changes and try to get it.
Yeah.
It will, well.
Good.
I think we didn't have any issues with the, this is the first year for the Lager Lounge, right? And we didn't have any issues down there? In the picnic shelter with the Lager Lounge.
Hey, any other discussion? I don't, you don't like to make a motion except 2023 Jamboree application?
Happily moved, might even.
To clarify, is the motion to approve?
The special use permit? Yes.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Counsel Ash, beat you to it, Counsel Norman. Been moved and seconded, would you call the roll please, Stephanie?
Counsel Norman?
Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hubert?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right on to the 4th of July request, page 11. I just had a comment, an observation, I was hoping that whenever there's alcohol involved, she could have been a little bit more definitive on the last sentence, we may have alcohol vendor, Buckshot Betties. To me, I mean, you should already have that as part of your application, but.
Well, and I think she's saying that because Buckshot Betties would come with their own request to do a beer garden separate from, usually it would be coinciding, right? But they'll have to get it signed or approved.
Okay.
They're doing, their goal is to do it up near the picnic shelter and not, because there are no big fireworks, do most of their stuff kind of in the front highway side of Spencer this year.
Okay.
Not as far back as it was.
Yeah, that was my only.
Yeah.
Any discussion or questions on this application?
So if we're technically approving it without O L C C, but it's checked as if, it's checked yes for alcohol permit, so are we approving this with permission for alcohol without a permit?
You're approving that they could do it, should Buckshot Betties bring their O L C C and follow their.
It would have to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have to do their O L C C paperwork separately.
And how, what's the grace period before the event? I mean, we're only about.
Timeline, they just away here. I think they only, I think they have it, they have two weeks, O L C C has two weeks, so.
Okay.
And it might be that she just put it in hoping Melissa could do it through Buckshot Betties and maybe Melissa isn't available to do it, 4th of July is on a Tuesday night.
Yeah.
So it may not be a good winner, Melissa might be weighing her options and just deciding, I'll just keep the bar open, have people come in to do that.
My concern, it was only a month away.
Yeah, it's a short time, they might not get approved even if they turned it in, yeah.
Okay.
You good?
I'm good.
I'll move that we approve the permit for 4th of July.
Okay, been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Webb, I'll roll please again, Stephanie.
Counsel Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hubert?
Aye.
Counsel Wagner?
Aye.
Counsel Webb?
Aye.
Counsel Norman?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, staff report, cemetery fee and rules update. Lots of pages.
Yeah, and I thought that I had put a resolution in the packet, not the rules and regulations.
There is, Ben.
Not for the cemetery.
For the ma.
We have some other, yeah, those are other ones, so, but we'll bring it back next time if you guys approve.
And the master fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the master fee schedule, so just the main, the main thing is what council would like to do with the cost of engraving for the colbarium, we had kept that separate, but it's turned out to not be particularly efficient and confusing to people who call. So at any rate, I would just like council to decide what to do, do we want to leave the cost the same, do we want to up at $100 or $150? I think adding another $250 is a little excessive because we are a little higher on our niches than the average niche cost in Oregon, which already includes engraving, so just kind of looking consensus from council about what you'd like us to bring back with the, with the fee schedule at the next, next meeting.
Go ahead. A recommendation out of the cemetery committee, or have they had a chance to?
They did not discuss it and we don't have a quorum anymore.
Okay.
We really don't have a committee, so.
We just, in the most recent interment at the niche, we were working with the woman and she was very confused because for the most part, the niche is a combo deal, right? You're getting interred, you're all things in one spot, and the engraving was separate, and it's kind of a guesstimate depending on what they engrave, so we're like, maybe.
And then we've already, we've already, it usually takes a couple months before we, the engraving is done, and then we get an invoice for it, and so then we're going back to the family again and saying, hey, hey, you owe us $130, it just.
It's not.
It's not, it's, yeah, it wasn't a, we had good intentions, but it just has turned out not to be practical, so like I, like I mentioned in the staff report, it's, it's fine if we just want to leave the prices as they are for now and include the engraving, we'd like to add $100 or $150, I think that's appropriate, but it's, it's really up to council what you, what you think is best and what you'd like to see on the, on the master fee schedule next meeting.
Go ahead.
I think the $100 is very appropriate, rolls it into one package, they don't have to think about it, and it covers or mostly covers our expenses.
And I mean, and we update the master fee schedule every year, so if the price changes radically, we could propose something to you guys.
We want a general consensus from the council then?
Yeah, on what you would like to do, leave it the same, add a $100.
I too, I've read the fee changes here, and I, I agree with the $100 increase.
I can go along with that.
Yeah, words for me.
Counsel Norman?
Sounds good.
So, $100 on both upper and lower niches on the fee schedule, and we'll change it just to say engraving included.
And that would, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that would include a second engraving for when the second person passes? Or are you expecting?
Well, you have to purchase, you have to, with the colbarium, per the rules and regulations, you have to purchase a second soul at the time of, of purchase. The, they actually, the engraver makes a rounds, essentially round Oregon, so like if, like some of them up there, they just are missing the death, the person hasn't passed yet and they're missing, they just charge like $100, and when they're passing through, they just do it.
Okay.
You know, it isn't a, it isn't a full engraving fee or anything like that, if they just need to put a final date on it, and you know, sometimes if they're, if they're coming through and they already have something else going on at the cemetery, they don't even charge for a final date.
Yeah.
It's like, oh, yep, you got, you get it for free, but you got to wait until the next time we're up at the cemetery engraving something, so, so, yeah, there's, there, there would not be any or significant cost down the road.
Okay, and any other questions on, on like the rules update changes?
There are several. Yeah, they're basically just wording, one, we had already done the two souls in a colbarium and added that, so that's basically just an update that needed to happen, misspelling, a couple other minor, minor things, and a couple of different wording, it's nothing, they were all, all pretty minor. We've had some issues with the size of containers, the, just, I roughly measured, measured it and said one foot, one cubic foot is the area that you get, well, it turns out it's a, you know, like 11 and 15, 16ths, and so I just wanted to change it to 11 cubic inches just to, because we had a couple of really tight fits, kind of, you know, sorry, sorry about your loved one here, but we got to kind of beat them into the, into the niche here, so. And then we do, the other thing was just our engraving, I had the old engraving templates that I had just done up, but then originally, but then OM Stone did these nice templates up for us that when I order engraving, I just say, hey, this is the wording, this is the engraving, the template that we want, and then it just happens, so just an update to that, and it was all, all pretty straightforward, I don't think there was anything super, super changing, so.
Okay.
So if you, yeah, if there's no, we'll, we'll bring a, we'll bring an ordinance to update this, I'm sorry, a resolution to update this at the next meeting, if there isn't any objections to these changes.
Okay, if there's no further questions, thank you very much, Ben.
You're welcome.
Staff report, 2023, 2024 utility rates, while you're here.
So here's the, yep, here's our, here's our rates for, plugged in the rates for this, this year, and this is what they come out to. We're in a little bit reverse order, we did have a change to the rate policy that's reflected here, so that kind of is discussed as a, as a resolution, but I don't think that should be an issue, I believe the budget committee was on, on essentially getting the over-the-counter money out so we're not double dipping our ratepayers, so in the, in the number three section, we have the new 3.b, which is removing the over-the-counter receipts, both for water and then on the second page sewer, so you can, yep, see, see what the, see what the rates are doing, and then the average bill is up 3%, and 95% of that 3% is the parts rate doubling, so the average bill is staying right in line. So that was, that's pretty much informational, and that's what you're going to see on the, on the master fee schedule next, next meeting.
Everyone understand the 5%? Cool.
5% rule.
I'm not.
Oh, we, yeah, and we did, we did actually, we had sewer consumption did go down 7%, so we're rebating the customer 2% of that, of that decrease, the difference of, of 5% so, but he's saving a, saving a nickel, a nickel per month, or, well, actually more than, could be significantly more than that, the nickel per thousand gallons of sewer consumption, so.
I actually played around with it, just for fun, I did a 3% at 29, 10, and 90% off the, it's kind of fun to play with, a little bit. Any other questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben. Okay, discussion, ARPA funding for grandstand removal, you all have a pass out?
Yeah. So Andy basically broke down what's come in, what the balances were, and then what remains and what is already kind of earmarked. So the process that we, back of the napkin we got from Trails End was, he was guesstimating, and he thought around $40,000. We haven't gone out to bid yet, so potentially someone else could give us a lower qualifying bid, should we go out to bid. Staff would like to propose that we do it similar to how we did the skate park, so in our franchise agreement, we get three 30-yard dumpsters with waste management for nothing. One of those, we always allow Jamboree to have on Adams, that's kind of the city's skin in the game for the festival, but, so we'll have two remaining, that's in a calendar year, we haven't used any this year, so the first two 30-yard dumpsters would be free, we priced out the potential for getting a big piece of equipment like we did initially from Peterson Cat, that's roughly, without knowing exactly how long we'll need it, about $4,000, and then the following 30-yard dumpsters would be around $1,000 or $1,000 apiece, that's fully weighted with five tons, it's like 100s of, $10 a ton, so if we had five tons in each dumpster, I don't know how much the tonnage is going, how much the wood's going to weigh and how much you can pack into it, but I just, worst case scenario, if you had five tons in a dumpster, it would cost roughly $850 with all the fees that, for the hauling, the mileage after the free mileage that they give you, they give you the first 14 miles free, and then you pay per mile and, and all the things. We think potentially that the city could do it themselves for like a not-to-exceed of So I'm kind of wanting to pick council's brain, as you see here, once we've done the things that have already been done, and then the earmarked kind of estimate, which one was backfilling, the overages from the ODOT, that's the $43,000 you see there, council at one time had talked about doing backfilling for the street paving revenue that we missed because we are, can do it for lost revenue of $100,000, or that could be sewer manhole lining, whatever council determines, and then the 400 is earmarked, and that came from Senator Johnson for the Louisiana north-south connection, so really what's available to spend after those kind of earmarked things is 93,000. So I'm kind of.
That's counting those backfills.
Yeah.
That you proposed. Okay.
So now talk amongst yourselves, what do you want to do, any questions on this, or?
Do you have a timeline as far as what our staff would be able to do that? That's, there's a lot of.
It'd be a volunteer.
Oh, volunteer.
We have a volunteer that's willing to play tonka and crush it into pieces and put it in dumpsters for us, so it's really just the equipment rental and the dumpsters.
Yeah.
I talked to Nick, he said the earliest he could get us all the dumpsters would be the third week of June, so not next week, but the next week, if we wanted to do something like that, so. My, I, if we had all the money in the world, the grinding seems like a great option, but we have to put it out to bid, and then the grinding may not come in as the lowest qualified bid, and so then there's, you're kind of stuck going with the most qualified low bid as a public agency, and then just getting into someone's schedule, now that the roof's down, will they be pushing us out to September? I'd like to have it gone before Jamboree, if we could, so that we can get it some gravel place and allards in and.
Sir, go ahead, Susan.
Is there a downside to the proposal of using a volunteer and saving a heck of a lot of money?
From our perspective, no, but I don't know what council thinks of that.
Well, it was built by volunteers.
Checked with waste management, since we did do that, all of the environmental testing.
Yeah.
No issue with them, it all can go into. No issue with them. It all can go into, all types of materials can go into the same dumpster, because they'll mark it as a demo, and that goes somewhere in their system specific.
At 15,000 is better than 40. If we can get it done, you know, within a month or so, that'd be pretty good, too. There's some iron in it, some steel pole, a couple of steel posts, and some hand railing, and who knows what's underneath it, you know? It's gonna be quite a job, but it could be done.
Yeah, and I mean, the, I'm hoping, and I don't know, I haven't gone and delved into what remains, but I was kind of secretly hoping one of those poles would survive. Potentially, we could use it for the camera mounting at the concert.
Yeah, and I thought of that as well.
Concrete basin with some, the right size-
Rick just pushed it over, so it went-
Okay, okay. I'm thinking that would save us a pretty penny for getting that. Electrical could be run to it and-
Yeah.
Use resources we have.
There's one, maybe two.
I thought there was two. I didn't know, I didn't know the condition after the call, because I wasn't here with them.
I think-
I don't think any.
Okay.
I think that they're okay.
Yeah.
Oh. Well, what do you guys think?
For one thing, it's more volunteerism in our town. Shows us-
Yeah.
That we're-
They'll have to sign a waiver, of course.
Yeah. And I did hear through the grapevine from Roger that there's some people that were wanting maybe a piece of it-
Yeah.
Something like that. So I'm thinking when we get a, a section of it kind of exposed, we could see if there's good wood there, and maybe potentially cut some stuff and-
Sure.
Let people-
Set it to the side somewhere.
Let them know they want to build a bench with-
Yeah.
-furs or some, I don't know how easily some of it's gonna come down, but some of it, I'm sure, would be easy to access.
Well, we can give you a general.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a local, like, scrapyard?
Not really. Not one that I want to have them take any more metal material.
I know a lot of them turn out of, pretty often, I mean, you can go all metal in it, and then anybody who would want to recycle the wood, that would, you know, that would-
Yeah.
A lot of concrete can make one.
I have a, I have a scrapper that has containers, but he can't have any more metal on the floodplain. I won't, we, we don't want him to be adding to it. Oh, okay. But is there enough metal for that?
No, probably not.
Okay.
Just some hand railing.
Okay.
Boy.
Rail.
I don't think so. It's pretty much wood, steel, maybe some rebar somewhere in the concrete, but-
Somebody said that has pretty big footing underneath it, so.
Yeah, there is. There's, there's a concrete footing underneath.
Bigger than the skate park wall? Because that was, that was tall when we actually got it exposed. And so that came out. I mean, it was a work to get it out, but it came out.
The big hole.
Yeah.
With a thumb.
Yeah, with the thumb, definitely.
That, yeah. I think we'll get some, at least as big as we had for skate park or the next size up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Because I think that was 40,000 pounds, the one for skate park. We did.
Well, do we have a general consensus from the council to move forward with volunteer work to finish the demo on it?
So do we want them to do it? Yeah, will you make a motion of a not to exceed, and then-
Motion to approve the expense from ARPA, $15,000 for removal of the grandstands.
I'm, oh, I move to approve ARPA funding not to exceed $15,000 to clean up the grandstands.
Okay, so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Call the roll, please. Hi.
Counsel Baker.
Hi.
Counsel what?
All right.
Counsel Ash.
Hi.
Counsel Norman.
Hi.
Boy, we're moving along.
Yeah.
Jackson first time. Okay, yeah, AdCom Engineering.
Okay, so I added this to your guys' agenda. As you know, you had me attend a few meetings 911 with going for the very large, what they were calling sole source procurement, which we didn't believe was sole source procurement, because other agencies actually source that. So we, we collectively, Columbia County Sheriff's Office, Rainier Police Department, Columbia City Police Department, Scapoose Police Department, and the Vernonia Police Department have some concerns that they're going to move forward. They're gonna go to the voters with this gigantic bill that we believe the voters will squash, and then we'll be even further a year out for getting communication upgrades that are necessary. So AdCom Engineering is willing to help the agencies that are interested look into, basically do the same thing we had been doing before. And I believe Tyler Miller, who's the city of Scapoose City Council member, had already interviewed the different agencies, but they would come and do their own assessment to see what the needs of each department really are. And they broke down the, they had, as you read, I'm sure, the scope of work. They broke down all the different things. They're doing it as a flat fee, and the cost is based by population or population served. So Columbia County Sheriff's Office and Scapoose would each pay $2,800, Rainier and Vernonia would pay $1,500, and then Columbia City would pay $1,200. Tyler wanted me to sign it, and I said, oh, I can't sign that without my council's approval, because it's not in the budget. And so we would just be using it out of police, and if you guys are for it, then we would sign for the, probably there's Sean or I would sign for the police department's approval of it.
Yeah.
Well, this is basically kind of a second opinion.
Right. And, and a more thorough opinion should the ballot measure fail, which we believe it will, at $30 million for 59,000 residents, or whatever the county holds now, probably a little bit over that. It's generational debt, which none of these police departments are interested in taking on for radios and communications, because, one, we don't believe the money number is necessary. And the other thing that we don't collectively believe is a good idea is the kind of intermingling with Washington County's network.
The thing that really gets me, Washington, Clackamas, Newburgh?
Yeah. So the, the small county out by itself with 59,000 residents is gonna get instantly on the cutting block when it comes, or be required to keep up with those bigger jurisdictions upgrades, which we know, obviously, we wouldn't be in this position if we could keep up with upgrades. So that's where, that's where we're at, and why we think this is a good idea to get a, a second look at what's really necessary. But Donald has it.
No.
This says 1,500.
Yeah.
Annually, monthly?
No, it's a flat rate for them to do the work. The work that's listed in here, one time.
Okay.
Yeah. Basically, they're gonna go do what the other agency didn't do, right? They're gonna talk to Sean and Kendall about what are you guys using currently? What are your needs for? Where are dead spots in your community? They're gonna go to Rainier. They're gonna go to Columbia City.
Do you have service on top of Scapoose Mountain?
Right. And St. Helens really is, doesn't care to be part of any of it, because they do not have a black, a dead spot, right? They're on the Highway 30 corridor. The Wi-Fi's pumping, the, all the things are, they're, they're just not affected the way the other county, the other communities in the county are.
That's there.
Yeah. They could go outside and yell to the sheriff.
Random part is, is that the 911 board didn't care that the sheriff didn't think it was a good idea either. He's on the same list as us. Like, that, that doesn't help us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you guys, if you guys are, make a motion to approve this expenditure, then we'll sign it, and they'll get going on looking into it for us.
I think it's three days.
Yeah.
I think it's a small investment to get a second opinion on this, get a change.
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion, counsel?
I will move that we approved $100 expense for the AdCom proposal.
Okay, so move. Is there a second?
I'll second. Do we need to include and authorize signature?
Oh, yes.
And authorize Josette or Sean to sign.
And it's been seconded.
And I, yes.
Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counsel Baker.
Hi.
Counsel Ash.
May.
Counsel Webb.
Hi.
Counsel Hober.
Hi. This is from the departments.
My cue?
It is. You don't, you're recording the second meeting.
Yeah. Only, only thing I got to bring to the council is, we're still having staffing issues, and by the end of the month, we're gonna be down another officer.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Afraid of that.
That's we can-
We just-
Good, thank you.
Move forward and keep trying.
Yeah.
Can I ask what, that, are we losing an officer?
Yes, to another agency.
It's the magic chill game.
Thanks, Sean. Well, not really.
You know, the expectation start is he'll be stationed in the Haylen Valley, so you know that loss, see?
Promise.
Yeah.
Good, okay. Be familiar with this.
With the Haylen Valley. Okay, ordinances and resolutions, or, uh, resolution 2023 dash 05, updating the utility rate adjustment policy.
Pretty, pretty straightforward. We're just adding to get the, adding the 3B deduction to get over the counter receipts out of the rate, so.
Okay, yeah. That's on page 43, what he just done.
Entertained consequence of our actions in the budget committee.
Okay.
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, to make a motion-
Absolutely.
-to adopt resolution number 2023 dash 05, a resolution updating the utility rate adjustment policy.
Call second.
And motion's been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counsel Hober.
Hi.
Counsel Norman.
Hi.
Counsel Baker.
Hi.
Counsel Ash.
Hi.
Resolution 2023 dash 06. SCA grant application.
Our design exemptions went through, so we are now allowed to apply again.
Drumroll.
Yeah.
Fabulous news, finally. So as, you know, you can, the application is a $250,000 grant. Ben so nicely went through and made you maps and then estimates of what the potential cost would be. And we listed them all, because we're not gonna run out of streets and have money left over. So you can see that the A, B, and C projects are all kind of that Upper D, G, East F, East, that name, Upper D, North Street and East North Street. Those are for repaving. We do not have E Street in there, because that is where the up, upsizing of the sewer line needs to go. So we're not gonna pave that and then come into it. And then in the plan, had the chip ceiling of the tree streets, and so that's what he's also included there.
No question. And I didn't have time to really dig into it, Ben, but North Street from State Street East, is that, is that first block in poor condition?
Yeah, it is.
Is it? Okay. I thought it was just the, the block up against a hill that was bad, but I couldn't remember.
No, I mean, it, I, I believe that it's like, I want to say that it's fair, and it's like marginal. It's actually probably poor. It's, it's probably marginal up to east and then poor up to the bottom of the hill.
Yeah, I know that section looked bad.
So, yeah, just, just throw in that. And that's the only, that is the last bit of the letter streets up to C Street that we haven't done with the SCA grants. So that entire neighborhood, get, if we get that section of North done, you know, and then the others. I mean, really, only it's E Street just because of the upgrade, the sewer upgrade. I mean, we've basically done all the center of town. Yeah. So.
I think the Public Works recommendation had some of the, not Capitol Hill, but Corey Hill-
Yeah.
-in it, but you've created it for Chip's Hill, you know, which is fine. But we don't have a lot left up there either.
No.
Sixth and-
Well, and part of, here's the other reason. We have two parcels up at the end of six, past where the road ends. The right of way continues north. There's two parcels. They're for sale. We've been getting a lot of inquiries about developing there. So there's gonna be a water and sewer coming in and some other stuff. So that's kind of one of those things that's kind of, yes, essentially in Corey Hill, all that's left is six. Have. But we need to, it, it's best that we wait here and see what happens. If we need, if we get all this done, and it comes up again, well, we'll, we'll put in for it. But I would like to, I'd like to hold off, because I think we're probably gonna have some water and sewer upgrades up there on six, so.
So then also that bottom end in Haylen, this is a short section, remember?
And then like the little bit of Columbia-
Yeah.
-filler.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the short piece of, of Columbia, east of Rose Ave, needs, needs done.
And the criteria is safety, you know, capacity, danger, that kind of thing. So it's harder with those smaller little snippets to make the case.
Yeah.
Stephanie?
Mayor Hober needs to declare a potential conflict of interest as his street is included in this ask.
On First Street.
And-
Thank you. I was wondering about that.
Yes, and Donald's.
For chip ceiling.
So all three of you are liable to make that declaration?
So declared.
This is all of First Street?
They all live on streets that are included in this ask.
Yes.
Okay.
God damn it, yeah. Thank you.
Financially impact them.
Oh, on the tree streets, okay.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think that's where they were-
Doesn't mean you can't vote, but you just have to declare a potential conflict, correct?
Yes, you actually have to say it, though. Yes, you actually have to say it, though.
I declare that I may have potential conflict because Alder Street is on the list of streets to be addressed.
And I, I too reside at 1185 First Street, a potential conflict of interest as it's on the, the chip ceiling docket.
I declare 1197 Elm Street that I might have a conflict of interest.
Great.
Thanks for keeping us upright.
So just is for, before you guys vote on this, is a, um, adder of, um, how, how the grant works before. We would just literally fill out a one-page form, send them a map. It was, so it was basically a two-page PDF and we would get the money. So now they have an online system, um, where you have to make arguments why you're doing it.
Condition pictures.
Condition pictures, and they're going to be, ODOT is going to be going out and looking at the individual projects and deciding which ones get funded. So, and then I was reading to have an updated information thing on the ODOT website. So they're gonna be more picky and they're gonna pick and choose. It's gonna be a little bit more work for staff, ba- basically for myself. But what you see is these, is these projects in these streets, I'm going to be breaking them out. Like all of the, each of the, um, tree streets is gonna be a separate one with its own photos. Of course, they'll all have basically the same text in for those, but I wanna break them all out separately. The G E F will be one, the Lower B Street, you know, so, we're gonna spend a little bit more time, but we're gonna, we're gonna break them out a little bit more. I don't wanna just clump too much together, especially like the chip ceiling, because if they come out and they, you know, like for instance, Alder Street, I, I think is gonna need it because it's, or will qualify because it's, has some, some issues. But there may be, you know, um, I think it's like, is it like Grove or something? It's actually in pretty good condition, but it's a prime candidate for chip ceiling to get it done before it starts to degrade anymore, excuse me. But at any rate, just for your information, so I'm gonna spend the extra time and I'm gonna break each one of these projects out as a separate thing at the time of getting it together. So when they come out, I just don't want them to wholesale discount stuff. But just for your information and moving forward, when we put in for these different projects for the SCA grants, it, it's very likely it won't be a wholesale thing, where they'll be like, okay, yep, this, this, and this, and we're, we're not funding this, this, and this. So just, so counsel understands that moving forward, there's kind of a different process for approving these projects.
So our Public Works crew, I mean, that's, that's another thing on these, these funding cycles, because we have to have this wrapped up by this time next year so we can apply in next year. So we're gonna have to kind of expedite our process a little bit, uh, I mean, because they gotta go in and prep streets and where we're doing a lift, they gotta go in and.
Make sure, yeah.
These, uh,
Yep.
The sewers and the water.
That's, it's a turn and burn.
Yeah.
Because in order to be able to go for it next year, you have to be completed.
Because we've been kind of, it was a two-year, you could have two, you could have one open, you could have the second one. So we were slopping into the next year, we were doing it, so.
Or the weather.
Yeah.
You know, when they're, it's kind of a bummer that their application deadline is the middle of summer. It should really be the middle of spring and then summer is when you can do it and then winter, nothing, right? They've, but that's the way it is.
Yeah, it's gonna be really tight to, if, to wait to spring. I mean, we really need to turn and burn and try to do it.
And if we have the.
September of this year.
Yeah, if we had the summer we had, we could definitely just say, we're looking for bids for September paving.
Yeah.
And then if you can't get us on your schedule in September for this, then don't even bid it, right?
But our crew's gonna have to.
Yeah.
I mean, I can see they wouldn't go spend the effort until we know we have the grant. When, when will we know?
Hell, I don't.
I mean, ballpark.
I want, usually we would know around.
I, I thought that was around like September.
Labor Day.
Something like that.
Something like that.
We would get, we used to get word back, but once again, they're sending somebody out to physically look at each one of these project areas, so.
They didn't, they didn't lengthen their, their, they didn't change it terribly from.
Yeah, so I, it, but we, we'll be on top of it. And as far as like Public Works, when, um, you know, for instance, Haas Paving, who has done a lot of our work over the years, like, they come in, they're ready. Their foreman is talking to Jeff.
Yeah.
And the public work staff is out there. As far as like getting that done, there's never been, never been an issue with public work staff integrating with the paving crews there to do the manholes or valves, stuff like that, so.
But we're gonna be doing more of it, too, you know?
Yeah, the chip ceiling's a little different.
Yeah.
More prepping, right? That's some prepping, some shoulder work.
Right, that's basically getting the shoulders scraped off.
That's stressful than raising valve covers and manhole legs, all that.
It's something we gotta be aware of and then we're probably gonna have to kind of change how we're, otherwise we'll be missing out.
Yeah, every other, yep.
We're getting more than double the money, but if we go every other year, well, it's.
Same money, yeah.
Well, maybe that, that could be a strategy on their part is to, you know, you're, they're offering it up every year with a significant amount, but they're gonna be more picky, maybe reject some projects. So we'll, we'll see how it plays out.
Okay, any other questions on this resolution 2023 dash 06?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt resolution number 2023 dash 06, all city allotment grant application.
Still moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Norman. You call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And the final resolution, number 2023 dash 07, declaring surplus property. H51.
What you have before you is a resolution from several departments. Connor had explained his, but the ABC brand, that was the service truck bin that was removed off our old ones, no longer needed. Due to the value, it has to be surplus. Yeah, that's great for him.
So as I've said before, the two chargers that Chief Connor had purchased, um, a couple of years ago, they're useless around here. They sit way lower to the ground. I mean, they're, they're just useless. I do have someone in Columbia County, Washington, that wants them. Um, and they're paying a pretty good price for them, not near what we paid, but, you know, um, I think it's fair. But in order to get a new vehicle to replace those two, um, get the surpluses and get rid of them, so. And then the other one is that the Ford Escape that we got, um, from Hillsborough PD, we didn't pay anything for it. It's got an electrical issue that even Dean can't, Dean and Rob can't track down. And it constantly has to be reset. Um, I guess the alarm and the ACU has to, you have to resync them every time the battery voltage goes to a certain low to a certain point or something like that, so it's not worth putting any money into.
Okay. Any questions about the four items?
So we had a brief discussion before on this, and how much did we have outstanding on those yet?
It was, uh, third, I believe Angie said it was like $37,000.
Yeah.
And we're getting 25 apiece for them.
Through another agency.
Through another agency, yeah. And I'm pulling the base radios out of them, um, because we're keeping those. Those are actually kind of spendy. Those are about $2,000, so, and they're already programmed from around here, so, for our frequencies, and so there's no sense in letting them go.
No. None of the other overhead or, or they got.
They go as is.
Yeah, because they're going to a police department.
Yeah, they're going, yeah, they're going to a sheriff's office in, uh, upper, I think it's northeast. Yeah, um, Washington there, so.
So with some of those funds, or, would it be about $15,000?
Yeah, so that'll sit in the vehicle lease. I think that's what's in the budget.
They'll pay for AdCom.
Well, it ha- it has to be for the, another vehicle, right? Because we'll.
Oh, I see.
Police vehicles, we want to outfit one after, you know, another one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to get another one.
Yeah.
Built because we're just, have the two Tavos.
Okay.
Have one of them, so.
Yeah. Okay.
So if any of you guys plan on bidding on any of these items, be sure to declare a potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
Anybody want an electrical faulty Ford Escape?
2006.
The alarm goes off.
Don't drive by it too loud or your alarm will go off.
Of course, we'll disclose all those things before we sell it.
Yeah, we'll save, some we can't figure out, still runs great, but you, your alarm might go off.
Alarm works.
Exactly.
Whether you want it or not.
Super special alarm.
Go ahead.
So I think if we get rid of these and want the $15,000 for a new one, what are we looking at for another new vehicle? Well, we're kind of going back and forth right now. I got, uh, the 2023 Dodge Durango, four-wheel drive, and then GMC, 2023 GMC Crew Cab. Um, they're about both the same price. Total build is, I think, around $60,000. It's fully outfitted and it's brand new, so.
And so in the budget is the $34,000 that we had for the vehicle lease, right? That was as if we kept these cars and paid them for the next two years. And then we'll have the little bit left over, whatever, comes back $13,000 or something like that.
Okay.
I guess the next question be is how well is the two bricks we have doing? The Tavos, yes.
One got a new transmission.
Yeah, the, the one with the light bar got a new transmission in it, new radiator and power steering pump. Right now, it's gonna need a throttle positioning sensor replaced, uh, because check engine light comes on, but it, that's not gonna be that much. Um, and mine, I, I don't really have any issues with it, so. I think both of them are what, around 130? 3,000 on both of them, so. They're 2011 Tavos. But the chargers just don't do us any good. I mean, really, they don't.
Any other questions? Oh.
No?
You raised your hand.
Okay. Any more discussion on this resolution? Anyone want to adopt it?
I move to adopt resolution number 2023 dash 07, resolution declaring certain public property of the city of Renonia no longer needed for public use and authorizing sale of said property.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. I'll roll, please, Stephanie.
Counselor Norman?
May.
Counselor Webber?
Aye.
Mayor Hubert?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, is there any correspondence? Okay, city admin report.
Hey, so, well, number one, you've all seen number one, the grandstands. Eric brought the great all, um, and knocked the sucker down, at least what he could. Um, so now with the, uh, $15,000, we'll get the equipment reserved from Peterson Cat, the dumpsters, and get going on that. Still know, I think they were hoping at the end of this month for the old dump site to do, start testing. They thought they might do it in late June. So I have an email into them kind of saying, are you gonna do it? Also related to something happening, or we thought was gonna happen in June, I know a few people, and maybe it came from parks. We have the new seismic has been installed and for the last 45 days, they've been dual reading. They're gonna take the old one out, decommission the old one in July, and then they're gonna fence all of them together. So the one from UVO and UNAVCO's new one will all be behind the same chain link fence for security and for people, nobody messing with the seismic monitoring. I just wanted to bring that up.
That is the airport you're talking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Their, their overlap readings end, at the end of this month. They'll be done and able to decommission the original one that's by the hangars. It's been on our finding report with the state airport, uh, board every year for 30 years or something. The lake dock, so I'm gonna be bringing to you at the second meeting in June, the request to apply for the restoration enhancement grant through ODFW. We had a ODFW walkabout for the springboard project and one of the reviewers, um, is our ODFW, one of our ODFW known guys, um, and he's like, oh, I'm, I'm a reviewer for the RME, and I'm like, oh. And he had some pictures he sent me of the docks at different points, uh, so to include with our application. So I'll be bringing that request for you guys to approve us applying for that, um, at the next meeting. The bathrooms, we had hoped they'd be open today. They'll be open tomorrow. And then the porta-bodies will get picked up. But yeah, they look very nice with the new partitions, new floor coating. We fixed a flange that had failed under one of the toilets so that we don't have to think about that for 20 years. New mirrors, um, and then new paper towel and toilet paper and all that. The electrical projects, um, I kind of gave Blake the what for because I'm like, where are you at? You come do the grandstands room transition and then you disappear from me. So, um, he will be putting the lighting in at the picnic shelter. There is already a 240 plug there. So that request on Stacy's, um, I, and then I put it on here because Stacy requested, but then in talking to Roger from Jamboree, he's like, we put that in last year. He's like, it's there, so that's not on the list. Um, and then once we get a pole placed, he'll pull electrical for the Spencer Park cameras. And then there is one light in the records room of police that needs to be switched to LED. Storm Ready City, no change. I haven't gotten an update on when the sign will be ready for us. I did talk to Michael Calhoun, just giving him a heads up that council will determine when that happens because he wanted to see if he could pick a date. And I was like, no, the council's going to, so we'll wait and see what they say. Um, and I did want to inter. And I did want to introduce the new park host for Anderson Park. This is Jeff Keiger. Him and his wife Brittany are our new park hosts. They've moved into the site. He's been, for the last month, has been taking care of the landscaping since Dory wasn't able to. But now Dory's moved on and they seem to be working out great.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you ever get a chance, stop down and meet his family, they're awesome.
Yeah. And so that's all I have for you guys unless you have specific questions for me.
Any? Mine's not important, go.
Yours is not important?
Your question wasn't important?
I was just curious if there's any word on the quarterly dinner since, in a quarter since the dinner.
I asked, Stephanie and I looked that up and I think it's St. Helen's next, but they have not sent us anything. I thought that too. I'm like, wait, shouldn't there be correspondence? Hasn't it been, shouldn't March? Yeah.
I have a list. I kept it from that meeting, actually I took a picture of it also. So if I can't find the sheet that I took from the meeting, I will find the photograph.
Well, I think we have the order. We have the order. It's St. Helen's next. We just haven't heard that they're inviting anyone to anything. They're just deciding whether to do it or not.
Yeah, go ahead. Are we getting flower pots this year?
That's one of the things that was on, is on my to-do list. I'm realizing only one woman can only do so much. My goal is, yes, we will be. I didn't want to redo the same ones as we had last year because they had, they were beautiful. But they had delicate things in them. When we got too much heat, we need the kind of sturdy petunia, sturdy kind of, and nobody sells, you know, or at the, none of the nurseries we were working with sold kind of just a one pot, right? So I am looking to get ones that we can just drop in the baskets that are solid petunia or solid something that's a little hardier.
Dale?
And Josette and I had a brief discussion around the lake leak.
Oh, right.
And I just was curious if you had any.
No, I put a call into him and then I saw him downtown on my way back here and I almost stopped. I was just going to pull over and be like, Robert, what's going on? You want to share with council what we talked about the tests will be or what we're?
Well, yeah, it's, there's something believable that is going on down there now, so. Oh, yeah, it's diminishing now.
The leak is?
Yeah. What's causing that?
That's interesting.
So as I started pumping the lake up, I think it started out at about ten gallons a minute when we were way low. Went all the way up to sixty gallons a minute. I installed a four-inch pipe in there, made a little dam and so I can measure it for a five-gallon bucket and a stopwatch. And now as it's going up, it's down, today it is down to thirty-five gallons a minute. I'm like scratching my head. I'm like, how does that work?
Maybe the odd death sitting in the way.
Do you think the amount of water, it kind of had a cave-in somehow?
And that could be, and that would be kind of not good if that's what's going on because.
And that would even enlarge it.
Eventually it'll start.
But that's probably what happened.
Fell down and actually plugged it.
And plugged it temporarily.
Yeah, so the plan would be to kind of go parallel with the trail above the watermark and dig a trench and see if we can see where it's like a one foot. Just clear it, can we see anything, put it back, clear it and see if we can see that crossing. We have, I mean Dale's narrowed it down to a very kind of small area where it could be. And then that's kind of our first.
So you have to get in there and scratch around.
Yeah, so we're talking with Watts about just coming up, scooping it and seeing. Because it did get moved, your guys' top ten.
So maybe an ignorant question. Is there a reason we can't get a camera to look at it?
We attempted to use the sewer cam, but you know, of course, the only way in is on the exit hole. And you got water flowing and trying to push it up. And we even tied a bottle on it, trying to float it because it's meant to have wheels to go up a pipe. And they say the camera, when it's submerged, really you can't see much. And it's kind of weird because most sewers aren't really full of water.
Right.
And so, you know, it sits up high enough that you get a view. But yeah, they tried, Chris came down and we tried to snake it up there and just didn't work. We did use dye in the lakeside. Irridescent dye that you put in there. And we kind of just made a line along the shore. And then we really suspicioned it was going to be right underneath the overflow culvert because that's where the dirt solutes, you know, when it is excavated, when they put the pipe in. And it's rodents or something that's causing this. Titters. And, but that's not where we found it. It was, it was probably thirty feet towards the lake pump from there. And you could actually see the dye moving and then pretty soon it started coming out on the other hand. So we know we're in the, kind of in the right spot. And I did find a rodent hole. Because when I was, I went down there and cut a trench myself as deep as I could do, just to kind of explore around to see if I could, because I'm thinking you're going to cut. And I found this rodent hole and I went back from it and cut down. And that's real heavy clay in that dike. And it was just a perfect round tube flowing through there. So, you know, the thought process is if it's rodents, that's what we're going to find with the backhoe. We'll probably be cutting through there and all of a sudden there will be a hole in the stream of water and then we can just ram it back shut. And that might be a temporary fix, but it will kind of answer some questions. Is it rodents? Can we plug it? How effectively can we get it stopped? And then if the rodents come back in there and open it up, we'll just redo that and pour it full of concrete next time.
And my, my thought, when you talked about the fact that it has diminished, is that they're backfilling it. Because that's what they do, whether it's a beaver or otter or river rat or something, I don't know. But let me also look into a different camera for you also.
For my? The what?
A different camera with my.
Yeah.
See if there's something that would be a little more effective. I'll just check.
Yeah.
You know, those computer guys, they like stuff, toys and such.
Thank you, Dale. Anything else for the C.A.? Hey, thank you, Josette. Well, items from the mayor conference, I just have one thing I'd like to recognize, J.R. Allen, for his, for his help this last weekend, getting the forklift and bringing the truck from Northwest Scaffolding out and actually him climbing up and taking down himself. It was a, it was one of my major concerns in the last year with this project that how we, how the heck are we going to get that scaffolding out without somebody getting seriously hurt? I mean, J.R. stepped up this weekend and also Rick Carlin was there to help. And he ran the forklift. I mean, it went really well and I think there was only one section of security fencing that got damaged when it came down. But if that was all, that was enough and we lucked out. Nothing hit the snack shack. It just won, one beginning huge step to completion and end of an error. There's a lot of people talked about it. So thank you, J.R. Allen, for that. And Dale, he put in, he was in there helping with the scaffolding. And thank you very much. That's all I have. Susan?
Okay, a couple of things. One, the friendship tree looks beautiful. I drove by a peace tree.
Peace tree.
Tree. It looks beautiful. I drove by today and the sun was shining through the leaves and I happen to love those trees anyway. But it looks really good and I was really concerned after winter and it looked so scary.
You wonder if it was dead or not.
I did wonder if it was dead. I'm glad it's not. Second, just a personal, I'm going to be out from the ninth and fifteenth in Wisconsin. For those of you who knew Dan or her husband had died and were having his, his celebration of life on Sunday in, no, Wacoma, Wacoma, Wisconsin. So it's a fun trip, great area. And then last thing is I would like to request a training council because I think we need some training on appropriate Robert's rules. We got the book that Angie had given us. And I don't know how many, I know I read through it a little bit, not as thoroughly as I should. Had some really good points. I think we need to recreate on appropriate council processes, procedures, Robert's rules and all that.
I can look into that?
I'm sorry?
I can look into that.
But you need council's permission and access. That's just my request. We could bring you guys, Steph can bring you back. What's out there is options.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other? Dale?
Yeah, Donnie stole my flower once. J.R. was asking me about it.
Of course he was because he's the downtown beautification counselor.
And we already discussed the leak. It's been the day watering trees down on the new McNair Forest. The bar upside area where there's not a lot of good topsoil to begin with. They're looking a little stressed, so I have a fifty-gallon drum in the back of my UTV. So I was running around out there. It was five hundred gallons of water by the time I was done. So, well, hopefully it, I walked through it today and it looked like it might have bought us some time. Hopefully we get this storm that may be coming in around the seventeenth, but we'll see. It's been showing rain in the models and the extended and they just keep shoving back, so. We did learn a lesson about deer. Growing trees in around the town of Renonia proper, if you're going to try to grow conifers, you better put a tube on them because they left those trees alone all winter when they're starving to death. And all the spring, right up here till they're ready to fawn.
And they must.
It must be like pickles to women that are pregnant because they went right down every row and just took the tops out of everything. So we're going to, I talked to Josette, I'll get a number. We're probably just, we'll buy the tubes and the bamboo stakes and maybe between myself and the forestry class, we'll get the rest of them tubed up because we're never going to get any height. The ones in the tubes are looking great, but.
Were they dugs?
Doug fur.
Yeah, that's what they ate?
Yeah, they took that new growth and they don't really, it was weird because I was watching one there. There's that little fir tree on the school, side of the school parking lot in front of my house. And I seen a deer the other day over there nipping that. And I was like, why is it eating Doug fur? That's like supposed to be a starvation ration, what I've seen in research. And, and then I go down there and they didn't eat on the sides, they just took the tops, it was nice.
New growth is tasty.
Turn my head, you know? And of course, I found a doe down there with twin fawns that were just pretty much newborn down there in one of the furrows.
Right.
In the.
Safe, they're safe though.
So. One other thing I wanted to bring up, we're talking about having, maybe meeting workshop or whatever. I think we need to streamline our complaint processes. In this last go-around, we were a little lost and it's not spelled out for us. I think there's different types of complaints and different processes that need to be followed. So I think that's something that I think we can get put down on paper. And so when the next one comes along, we have something to go by.
Yes, I have.
If.
I have a request into Ruben for that. I have a request into Ruben for that to get us a.
Oh, do you? Okay, good, that'd be good.
That's why you guys' council rules haven't come back, just all at once. We're going to have the quarterly's, then the other little amendments and then a complaint procedure.
Well, and I think we need to spell out because there's different types of complaints. You know, because there's, there's some that are citizens, it might be. You know, they might have a complaint against a staff person and depending where that is, then who does that process? Then there's ones where it probably comes to us to have to deal with. But then there's also staff rulings on, on a complaint, on say, on an ordinance, they figure something's been, that isn't right. And maybe staff says, no, that's fine, that's good. But if they don't agree, is there an appeal process?
Yeah, it comes to you guys.
Yeah, but is that in black and white anyway?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, I believe it's in.
I'm sorry, what are you saying?
So if the, if a citizen was upset with, like say they said this ordinance, you're not doing this ordinance right. And I said, yes, we are, their appeal would be to them. And that's in what document is?
Title IX, all the line used ones would come to you guys.
So that's in the Title IX documents?
They would have to submit a letter or come top us before to you guys. And you guys are the ultimate deciders. You guys are the ones who have to change the ordinance. If they want it changed, they have to ask that to you.
Yeah.
Well.
Title IX.
And it may not be a change, it may be the interpretation.
Also a decision, right? So if they do not like they, something I say, they appeal to you.
Yeah, Title IX is a little bit different and that they also can submit to have it changed with a code amendment, which costs money.
Yeah.
So, and I think what's really lacking for some people is having something that spells out this process for them. I think, I think a lot of people think if they come in and they sit down with Josette or to a staff person and go, hey, I got to complain about this. Well, it's not really a formal complaint. They're not really filing a formal complaint or, I mean, it's just, it's just kind of one-on-one.
Well, and is it a complaint about the execution, staff's execution of an ordinance?
Or they don't.
Or they don't like the ordinance?
Because I've, I can say this, I have talked to hundreds and hundreds of people on the phone that don't like what we say about a fence in the flood plain or how the cemetery is run or any number of things. And I tell them, next Monday or two Mondays, you just go right across the hall.
Yep.
You get up there and you tell them all about it.
We tell people that all the time.
Not one, not a single person is his.
So if they brought it to us and they said it's wrong, we would say the only person that can change that for you is the city council. We are, as staff, are required to follow the policies they set. You want a policy change, you have to go speak to council. But ninety, well, a hundred percent of them don't.
Yeah, and that's what I tell people. I said, we're just box checkers.
Yeah.
I don't make the rules. You know, council, council makes the rules. Well, once you tell them that, they're, they think they can come up and be mad at you because you're just reading in black and white and reading down the rules and you don't give in to them.
Right.
And then when you say, no, it's not my rules, it's council's rules, go tell, go to, call them an asshole. Right? And yell at them.
Yeah.
No, they, they don't want to do that.
Like I say, though, I still think people think, they come in here or they pick up the phone and they go, hey, this is going on and I don't think this is, falls within the ordinance. And, and you know, staff might review it. and, you know, staff might review it and go, no, it does, and you know, but I don't think many of them understand and you may not always go, well, you don't.
No, I say it every time, Dale. If they don't like the answer I give them based on a policy council has in place.
They can appeal.
Tell them, go speak to council, they're the only ones that can change it, can say you're not required to do it. We're not the deciders, we're just the followers of the policy, so that's kind of our stance collectively.
And maybe something.
I mean, if you know of a person that's feeling that way, have them call me tomorrow and I will tell them that, depending on what it is that they're, I mean, I will say, you know, this is currently in the ordinance, I've, I've sent people ordinances before to clarify and highlighted for them where I see this is the rule and, you know.
I think there's a difference between personnel complaints and complaints regarding policies, procedures and laws in the city of Brunnonia.
Right, and I agree, I think there's, there's different ones, there's different levels.
I think almost every one of our, and I can pull them all, but documents say if there's an appeal process, it spells it out.
Okay.
On the, any land use decisions, you know, most ordinances, the employee handbook spells it out, if someone doesn't like my decision or the chief of police decision, they have an appeal process through you guys. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, and we could, we could do a, you know, if council looks at all of it or discusses it and wants like a one pager.
Right.
We could post that and the documents on the website, just to.
This be a little one paragraph thing of you know, if you're in disagreement with the enforcement of the laws, rules and regulations in the city of Brunnonia, then your ultimate appeals board is the city council.
Yeah.
That's for everything, they don't like the color of the carpet, they go to you.
Yeah.
But again, I don't know, somebody coming here from topics from the floor, again, I, I really think if somebody, that, if they're gonna really appeal something, it should be a document that they bring forward that I'm appealing this decision to the city council, it needs to be a little more formal.
But those, those are for my title nine, if there's a, if there's a planning dispute.
Yeah.
That is.
That is.
There's like, that is the longest, the, the appeals part of title nine in black and white is like, like thirty percent of the entire.
Yeah.
Land use document.
But I don't think you're talking about that, I'm intrigued as to what you're talking about, but I don't know.
You're talking about other stuff.
The, the other, on the flip side, we, we also don't want to do is have people coming to you thinking the policy you have in place can be negotiated, that's the other kind of slippery slope is if we're like, you know, this is the cost of something that's in the master fee schedule or this is allowed or not allowed based on park rules or whatever. I don't want them coming and debating the park rules with you if they don't like that you have to have your dog leashed or something like that, because that seems foolish, those are kind of the kind we hope blow over.
Right.
You know, someone, we show them the rule, we tell them their vehicle is you if they don't like the rule, but the rule still stands.
That's really getting into the micromanagement part of it and saying, we don't respect our staff, you guys just come to us and we'll make the ultimate decisions. Whereas you guys are making the decision to adopt those laws, rules and policies, that is the decision. And so really, oftentimes with people that we talk to, when they come to you guys, if they were to come to you guys, your correct response would be to say, we, we agree with our staff's decision on this and this is our current rules and policies.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming before us today. But if they come here for everything, then that's just saying, I don't respect my staff's opinions or their interpretation of the laws.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that, but.
So if you know of something you'd like to share with me at a later date, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I, I could.
You're talking.
I could probably have a discussion.
Okay, that'd be good. Because I don't know even what we're talking about.
My initial, my initial review of this person's grievance was I kind of tended to agree with them, um, so anyhow.
Okay.
All.
Good.
I mean, looking at our ordinance, it was like, yeah, I don't see how that fits, but.
Trying to think of ordinance I've discussed with anyone now.
Um, did you, uh, you get my board on the FEMA?
Yeah, I, I didn't get the chance to read through it, it's a lot.
Yeah, and then I.
I did register for the upcoming.
All the.
Seminar for stacks.
Have any rest, you been getting that? Okay.
So I'm gonna.
It's gonna be a major change, potential change.
I'm gonna sit in on, I registered for the one on the seventh, so I can get a better handle of what they're what it affects us.
Because the big thing that I saw was like, what was it, 170 foot setback from, I don't, from the edge of the river?
Top of the bank.
Top of the river bank.
Okay.
I don't know. Uh, it was National Marine Fisheries Services found FEMA's rules are in violation of the Endangered Species Act.
Well, and what Dale and I were talking about, in some areas, 170 feet would be across the street.
Yeah.
Um, from the property that can't build, so are they saying the person that 170 feet across the street couldn't build? Like, at some point, you know, so we need to know exactly how.
Kind of good.
Talking about a repairant buffer.
For me.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, I mean, I think, I think they're gonna get, I personally think they're gonna get pushed back in lawsuits from people that no longer have a right of use to their own property because of this new where last year they could build a house, maybe they had to set it back 50 feet from a repairant. Now their property is totally unusable and how will they be made whole, I mean, that's gonna be.
Extra charis is a prime example.
Again. They've cleared every tree except the back bank.
Oh, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was out there screaming. They were crossing the property line to the one in between, I said, they don't own this, your client does not own this property, you don't touch it.
Yeah.
I was furious.
Yeah, and I'm all for the, you know, if it's based on cubic feet per second, that kind of information seems to have always been legitimate, right? So many cubic feet per second of flow and, and as that increases, you increase the repairing, because those are typically waterways that have bigger wider berths, but, um, yeah, I'm worried they're gonna get a whole bunch of lawsuits if they start making people's properties unusable. Not even, you know, recreational land in the middle of the city limits, that would be really odd, but it could potentially be there, so.
And then, uh, I think our current rule is, uh, one inch of rise, you, you, you can you can build as long as you don't create more than one inch of rise in a cross section and go into zero. So how do you build anything if you can't have any rise?
Yeah.
So, and then there was a tree inventory part that might be burdensome for the city. Um, so, yeah.
Yeah.
But on the horizon, and, 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 and stuff that we would have to adopt.
Right.
Ordinances that we'd have to adopt, so.
We definitely have to amend at minimum.
Yeah.
Correct.
Might be some more work on our staff in the future if this goes through.
Okay, any other items from the council? If not, we're ready for an action item summary.
Okay, so staff's gonna bring you guys the updated master fee schedule with the new utility rates. Also with the upgraded or increased niche prices to include the hundred dollar engraving fee within the niche cost overall. Um, we're gonna bring you the resolution for the cemetery rules update. Get going on the ARPA funding for the grandstand removal. And the city recorder's gonna look into council training options and bring you back those at the future date.
Is the fee schedule update gonna have the parks updates as well?
Yeah, we'll have everything that changed via the budget and then the niche.
And tomorrow night, we have a workshop at 6:30?
Yes.
Please, please?
Yes.
Yep.
Your guys', you're gonna look at contract, discuss potentials for police.
All right. Thank you all for your participation tonight, I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:40, meeting adjourned.
That's 6:30 tomorrow?
Yes.